No.
You want to just?
Supper, I'm gonna eat.
So he told me if he had any questions, he would raise his hand.
Okay, sure. Are you ready, Rick? Okay, like to get this meeting started, our budget workshop. Are we all ready?
Yeah.
As we've done in the past, what we've done is we've gone over the book line by line. I'm gonna try to get us all out of here before nine o'clock. Set a time limit.
Yeah, right.
Maybe even eight thirty. But first, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Mancini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I believe what you each should have a copy of in front of you is an adjustment to the originally proposed budget from last Thursday. If you recall during that presentation, when we got to the special ed slide, I said I would be bringing you updated information on that at this workshop. So Mrs. Mallett has prepared a summary for you, and I will let her to speak to those adjustments.
After looking at or going to the Board of Finance Workshop, they reminded me of the gasoline prices that the town of Suddington had locked in for many years, and now it's going up. So that does have an impact on our budget as well. Our maintenance department, our special ed vehicles, and our AGSI buses all use the town's gas pumps. So the first adjustment is to the operation of vehicles and the regular BOE line items for eleven thousand one thirty-five. And then we go into the out-of-town tuition for special ed, which Mr. Mancini was just referencing. After looking at the graduation dates of some of the special ed students, we were able to bring the line item for out-of-town tuition down by two hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-four. We also have one agency place student at the current time, and his nexus is now changing, so he would not be part of our budget in the twenty-four year, so we removed that line item of one oh six for twenty-three. The next line item is in addition for gasoline for the special education vans. We have two vans that mainly are used by our stellar group for job placements and going around to community experiences. And then the last adjustment is an increase to the ASTE or AGSI travel line items for their buses. They have two small buses that they also use to get their students around. And those are all student activity vehicles. They do not pick kids up at home and bring them back and forth to school. They're only transportation vehicles for when the students are at school to go to the activities around town. So the total downward adjustment reduction to the original budget is three hundred and forty-seven thousand nine forty-seven, bringing the current operating budget proposal of a hundred and twelve million oh forty-nine eight eighty-four, which is a seven point three one percent increase over the previous year.
Yes?
Just one clarification question. So those two line items of the roughly three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, how many students is that?
The agency place is only one, the other is at least three.
Okay, so again, I want to further show that, you know, we're talking four students of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to provide education.
Right. And you don't see any transportation reduction at this time? I did have a conversation with Mr. Vermonno and the special education people today, but those students that are coming off also have other students attending those facilities. So the bus didn't stop bringing, the transportation is still happening.
Right, understood.
So we'll continue to monitor that, but based on how we're seeing the expenses for the current year come in, we weren't comfortable bringing a reduction for the transportation at this time.
And just for clarification, since we are being videotaped this evening, could you explain nexus?
Sure. Nexus is essentially the town that's responsible for payment relative to the student's primary residence. So sometimes if the family last resided in Suddington in its agency place, then Suddington is now responsible for the cost of that outplacement. If the family relocates to another town, then they are now responsible for the agency tuition.
Thank you.
And for just one instance of that, that was a hundred and six thousand dollars.
All right.
Yes?
Yeah.
Only for tuition.
Right.
And those tuitions are based on whatever services the students are receiving at those facilities, based on their IEP.
Right, okay.
So it definitely varies by student and by facility.
Okay, are we all good? Okay, so opening up to page one. Mr. Mancini's opening. Does anyone have any questions? Sorry, a little bit back. Okay, then let's get to the budget summary. Page two. Are there any questions on any items on here? I'm gonna ask a question. Could you explain the Title I funding reduction for the public, please?
Sure. The federal, Title I is a federal loan, and the federal government uses a calculation that determines the amount of federal funding a district would receive based on a variety of factors and from what we've been told up to including the poverty rate. And given some changes to our overall percentage, normally we were over five percent, so that gave us a certain amount. The latest adjustment was brought us in at four point nine seven percent. So because that three one hundredths of a percentage point shift, that was a reduction in Federal I funding of two hundred and thirty-three thousand.
So it was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and the amount that you're showing here is the difference between what our budget was reduced by last year to what we reduced by this year, meaning there's an extra two hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-seven in the fiscal twenty-four budget to reflect the offset of the Title I funds.
And you just got this information?
In late October, early November.
Okay.
For the current year.
For the current year, so they reduce this year, so anticipating next year will be the same.
Okay, nice.
But to your point, that's one of the challenges associated with this, and I know that you guys discussed this at length at the last meeting, but, you know, we adopt our budget in May, and planning with use of those funds, and then in October of that fiscal year, we get that adjustment.
Reduced mid-fiscal year.
Right, that reduction.
And we did note in our finance committee that the Title I funding hasn't been at this level since the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve fiscal year.
Okay, anyone else have a question, or is it just? Could you return the four teachers to the operating budget, the four nexus funded with nexus?
Sure, last year during our reallocation, before we adopted the budget, instead of choosing to use our ESSR funds to restore all of the FTEs back to our operating budget, we allocated their salaries against the nexus billings that we send out. When, and it's for the open choice students that attend from other districts, we send an invoice to the schools for the additional services based on the IEPs of each individual child. And that's part of their district's excess cost. So we're made whole for the services that we're providing. So we allocated four teachers towards the tuition that we would collect based on our nexus billings. And we're looking here to bring them back into the operating budget. We have, the nexus tuitions are obviously based on the students that attend our schools. And in the previous year, we had one student that required services that we filled to the Hartford District of over a hundred thousand dollars just for one student, and that student is no longer in our school, didn't return to Suddington. So, you know, we have to be very careful of how much we're taking on, knowing that we're gonna be filling services out.
So these aren't new teachers, they have been in our district, but our funding source for the nexus is so variable, is that?
Right, they were previously part of our operating budget, and two years ago, we moved twelve point two five FTEs out of the operating budget using our ESSR funds, and in an attempt last year at this time to bring them back into our budget. We did include them all in our budget during our Board of Ed approved budget, and when it came back to us from the Town Council and the Board of Finance with the reductions, this was one of the methods that we use to fund those teachers.
So this is just bringing them all back to where they started? Okay.
These FTEs were supplanted by the use of the R-BESR funds from the operating budget. These were never added FTEs as part of the R-BESR funds.
Okay, any other questions? All right, to our regular education section. Anything on page three, which is just a chart and graph? No? The regular education employee salary summary? Page four.
So the regular employee salary, to make sure I'm correct, I think the last cycle it was what, three point eight percent-ish, three point eight-three, I think is what the increase was?
For our total budget?
Yes, for the last budget cycle.
Our approved budget in the current year was a three point eight percent increase.
And this time, we're at two point seven-three, so we're under where we were last time.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about this page.
Yeah, the increase over prior this budget, right? So last year, the increase was three point eight-three. If I look at the numbers right, no?
No, the whole budget was an increase of three point eight-three.
The whole budget was two point eight.
Three point eight.
Not just the salary.
Not just salaries.
But to your point, Jasper, this is a two point seven-three percent increase over the prior year.
Correct, and I think the salaries last time were at three point eight-three.
I'm sure we can look it up.
I'm just curious, I just wanna make sure, see where we're at.
I can't look it up, because Mr. O'Shaughnessy would get canceled out, but we can look that up.
I think the whole budget increased.
It was three point eight, that was our total increase. The whole budget.
He's saying it could be both.
It could be both.
Yeah, it could be both.
This is the calculation of the increase of only the salary line item over itself, not the grant total.
I've got last year's book, it was three point eight-three.
Okay.
Does the adjustment of the confidence this answer?
Last year's book, yeah, page.
Yes.
He's looking at last year's.
So that's the benefits of the district.
Of last year's, right?
Yes.
So Ms. O'Shaughnessy's question was, is this considering the adjustment due to the use of the R-BESR funds to flatten out the salary rate? And?
Yes, so the, I could have given you a more detailed schedule on this page. Last year, our gross salaries were fifty point one million. We reduced it by a turnover number of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand one ninety, and then we also used three hundred and fifty thousand of ARP-ESR funding to reduce the contractual salary increases to retain existing staff. So that brought us down to the net number that you're seeing at the top of that page, which is forty-nine point four million. The current year, our gross salaries starting out are fifty-one point seven. We reduced, as you see here, the anticipated turnover, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, and we're also using ARP-ESR funding again for the contractual increases to retain existing staff, an amount of five hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and nineteen. And you do actually see those amounts later in the grant section. So in the fiscal year twenty-four, you'll see on page fifty-seven that the retain existing staff figure is listed there. So it's the net of both of those transfers, and when I do that calculation out, it comes out to a three point zero two percent increase of gross salaries year over year.
Sure.
But if I could add, you know, we spoke this a little bit at the budget presentation, a lot of districts have relied on R-BESR to hire staff. And we talked about how in fiscal year twenty-five, several of them face either unemployment layoffs or some sort of fiscal cliff associated with keeping those staff members on. Our strategy was to use these funds to retain and attract existing staff or staff in shortage areas. And so as the Record Journal ran that recent article on the, you know, teacher shortage, you know, I was able to say because of what we did with the last round of negotiations, trying to offset the increases, but yet they something to competitive at the same time, right now, we're in a good position, you know, and we're able to stay competitive with the surrounding towns, which hadn't been the case in the past. And so, you know, it does help us down the road in that it doesn't set us up for as much of a fiscal cliff relative to layoffs. However, you know, those are still one-time grant funds that are being applied to the operating budget, just as when we did this two years ago. So at some point down the road, that base has to be addressed relative to the cost of operations when we consider salaries.
Any other questions on this page?
Yes, yeah, real quick. This anticipated turnover number of three hundred and eighty-three thousand, that's just, that's a calculated figure based on ten positions? From a senior, basically salary level to a beginning replacement?
Yeah, I believe we use, is it master step three? It's a master three, master two. So what you do is you look for attrition between the two. So when you take the teacher with the advanced degree top step that they're on, and you subtract what the cost would be to hire a new FTE at the lower salary, the differential is applied towards that three eight-eight, or three eight-three. So when you do that ten times, that's how you get that number.
Okay, so, you know, basically that number comes up like thirty-eight thousand per position?
Yeah.
And that's the number you traditionally use?
It's not just salary, right?
It just seems like a lot, right?
But they may be both getting benefits. You may be getting a senior staff member who may be on a couples plan, could be on a family plan, that could vary, could be on a single plan, and then the new staff member, same, could be a single plan, couple plan, family plan. So it's hard to anticipate that shift in terms of attrition, because you don't know what the situation will be of the employee that could be on board against the employee that's retired.
Steve, do they have, do we have, or teachers have to submit their contention by December?
Yes.
So you've already had some of that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So it is, it's a master step thirteen, which is ninety-two thousand three hundred, minus master step two, which is fifty-four thousand. So the difference is thirty-eight thousand three hundred times ten employees.
I'll say, you know, one of the challenges we have right now is finding teachers in shortage areas that masters step two. Most of them who are student teaching or doing internships in schools are getting hired by those schools before they even hit the job market, which then means we're posting and we're competing for teachers that may be higher on the salary grid because it's a shortage area and we need to fulfill, you know, the vacancy that was created by that retirement. So I think one of the luxuries of attrition that we've enjoyed in years past, that is an area where the teacher shortage is impacting all districts, not just Suddington, it's just, it's getting very competitive.
How many shortage areas, I mean?
The state declares it each year. It's usually, I think right now, I don't wanna misspeak, but I could tell you, there are several that are common. World Language, Math, Science, Special Education are the big four. Sometimes you may have some support services, like school psychologist, Family Consumer Science has been a shortage area in the past, Business has been a shortage area in the past. It's basically the percentage of certified staff against the percentage of positions that are eligible for, you know, employment, and that's how they determine.
Any other questions?
That list is updated each year by the State Department of Education.
Any other questions, gentlemen, please? Now, page five, any questions? Jay?
Yeah, the secretary substitutes, it's a very low number.
What number is that?
It's twelve two twenty.
Thank you.
Looking for a substantial increase, hundred percent, a twenty-five hundred dollar increase. I'd like to know exactly, you know, what the hourly rate of this, okay? And is this to fill in for long term, can't be long term?
It could be short term or long term. For example, we had a secretary who had surgery recently, and we hired a substitute, and her salary was paid, or her wages were paid through this line item. It's to basically be able to keep track of non-full-time salaries, we put it down here. And you can see in the second column, over the twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two expended year, we had seven thousand oh twenty-five, and the budget was twenty-five hundred. So we're just trying to look for a small increase in that line item, even though it's a hundred percent increase, it's twenty-five hundred dollars. And I did see your question earlier, so those, the salary substitutes, sorry, the substitute secretaries and all of those wages come to the board on the unaffiliated approved salary listing that you see in the springtime, I believe, in executive session. So the current approved wages for that line item vary between twenty dollars and twenty dollars, I'm sorry, twenty-four dollars and thirteen cents per hour, and they're just paid an hourly wage for the hours that they work. And all that goes through the Human Resource Office.
Under normal circumstances, if somebody calls in and they're out for a couple days, those slots are actually filled.
Not always. I mean, depending on, some schools, we only have one front office staff member, so in those situations, we do try to backfill with support so that there's people, if people are buzzing at the door, someone's letting them in, answering phones, whatnot. But we also have, in some instances, there may be a clerk and a full-time secretary, and we may just allow the clerk to work the additional hours that day to make sure the office has complete coverage. We don't have enough bodies to provide substitute coverage for all absences, so a lot of it's based on need, given the situation.
Another question I had is the reduction in the guidance salaries?
That was my question.
That's one of the, that's one of the budget transfers that we spoke about at the Finance Committee recently. As staff resigned or transferred last year from guidance positions, especially at the elementary schools, the position, or the position was filled with social workers. So when we get to the special education section, you'll see an increase in the social worker line item. So it's essentially a reduction of hiring people from guidance counselor salaries to social workers.
How many athletic attendants out, athletic attendant people do we have? High school and middle schools, is that the only place we have them?
Certainly at the high school, I would have to look to see what we have at the middle schools. It's essentially people taking their tickets for the football games and the basketball games, and then scorekeepers, time clock people at the games running the time clock. So it's not, it's not a large number, but that is one of those hourly wages that is not part of our unaffiliated, and Mr. Rizer had requested to add some additional money to those line items over the last couple of years to try to increase what the amount of money that those people would be paid for those jobs, because there has been no increase in several years.
So they would be different than the event supervisors and chaperones, correct? That would be, they'd be different people or different positions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, the event chaperones are part of the middle school practice of always having chaperones present at practices and athletic contests. And then we do have some instances where we have a need for chaperones for certain activities. Let's say if we do unified sports or field trips that require additional staffing to accommodate the needs of students, we can take it from that account.
Joe?
So my question was specifically with the eleven seven twenty and eleven seven forty, the registered nurses and licensed LPNs?
Yep.
So again, looking at this, I mean, I'm talking over a million dollars of budget in these two, these two things. From the twenty-one to twenty-two, did the increase in the LPN, and then also then seeing at twenty-two to twenty-three, the increase in the registered nursing? Was that increase in actual, like FTEs for nursing?
No, I think that was just the contract.
Okay, and then with that being said, did you make any modifications? I mean, twenty-one, twenty-two was still technically coming out of COVID. Was there any increase in nursing staffing, and then is there any potential for?
I wish there was, there were no nurses available. We're actually, we've been, I don't wanna say short set, but the floating nurse that we always had has been working pretty regularly, that it kind of restricts the floating nurse we had for one other, or simply calling out sick. So we often have nurses that may be at one building covering over another building and having to go there if there's a need.
Okay, and then just for my own knowledge, what's the typical staffing of, so like in elementary school, I assume we have a nurse on staff, right? And then with middle schools, is it still one nurse, or is it two nurses, or is there flex staffing, and then what's a high school?
One nurse and one LPM at each middle school.
Okay.
And then at the high schools, I believe, I don't wanna misspeak, but I believe it's three.
I think we have two LPNs and one RN at the high school.
Okay.
Three total?
Mm-hmm, two RNs, two LPNs.
You good? Jasper?
Yeah, line item eleven five hundred for library media salaries. Twenty-one, twenty-two, it looks like we saved about seventy-five thousand dollars, and now we're showing that we're looking for an additional twenty thousand. So what's, what drove the savings in twenty-one, twenty-two, and what's driving the need for the increases now?
So in twenty-one, twenty-two, we moved our library media specialist from the middle schools. We shared one person at the middle schools, and he was moved into a.
Instructional technology support role, because we at the time had all of the one-to-one devices coming on and all the new software, you know, we had to work the digital, the remote learning. So he was kind of essentially a teacher on assignment, so his salary came out of that line item, because he wasn't doing library media anymore. And he was, that was a one-year position. We returned him to that vacancy, because those two middle school media centers were being staffed at the time by a full-time paraeducator at each middle school strictly for the reason of book and circulation, because we were also using those middle school media centers as cafeterias, right? And we had to, because of the spacing and multiple locations of meeting. So it wasn't really a full-service media center the way we see it operating today now, we go back to its original use.
And that, the salary for that individual is listed under the ESSR two grant detail on page fifty-six, that you'll see later. It's an instructional tech specialist, and it was sixty-nine thousand eight ten, so that's essentially what you're looking at. He was not part of that line item, because he was acting in a different role.
Okay, thank you.
And now he's back in that line item.
You have another one? Yep, one, you good? One?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, page six, fresh now. Anything on the page seven and eight? Yeah, I did, I highlighted something, count number one for two hundred, new personnel salaries, because there's no line item for that. I just wanted to point that out. Okay.
Just in case we needed it.
I know it's there, but we don't have anything assigned to it. If we're good with that section, let's move on to benefits. And page nine? Yes?
I understand the increase for the social security fees, but the social security contribution is much higher than the Medicare. But yet, the Medicare is almost double the social security increase. Could you give me some detail behind that?
So those are based on previous year actuals, and then we add an inflation factor of three percent to mirror the salary line items. Not all of our staff pay social security, but everybody pays Medicare.
And social security has a cap, Medicare doesn't?
Correct. And the teachers do not pay into social security.
But they do pay Medicare.
Yes.
Did you say Medicare doesn't have a cap, Sam?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And if you look at that, those, that Medicare line item, David, in the year '22 budget versus expended, it's historically been under budgeted, which is another reason why it's going up.
Anyone else have any questions on here? Yep.
And just to reply, so the, the health insurance, with that being as robust of a number, that, that's what we've been talking about as far as the, I guess, the underfunding, if you will, or?
Well, it's a self-insurance that, yeah.
What's encouraged, where we should be?
And that, so what you're seeing on this page is only the regular education allocation of the health insurance?
There's a special.
You'll also see it in special education, and you'll also see it in the agriculture science and technology under the other, or special budget section.
Thank you. How often do we go out and bid the insurance? I know it's self-insurance, but how often, I'm just curious, I don't know how often that happens.
Do you want to answer that, Holly?
We've gone out the past two years, twice in three years. Zay, am I right on that?
Yeah.
Twice in three years.
And there were some good competitive quotes, and there was some good competitive information that came out. But a decision was made to stay with Anthem.
Do we have an idea of what the, what's the proposed savings of going out to different businesses?
That's a very technical question that the self-insurance committee did look at at the time.
Was it millions?
Well, let's put, anytime you go out to bid and you go with somebody new, of course they're going to make it as attractive as possible.
Sure.
And that's why I think in a lot of large businesses, corporations, who go out every year to see who's the best bidder, well, this time around, we tried to go out, another vendor did make off, an attractive offer, but at the end of the day, it was decided to stay with, with Anthem. So I, I don't, honestly, I don't remember what the numbers were. I don't, yes.
I don't believe it was billions.
No, it wasn't. There, there were savings involved, there were, you know, there were.
Weekends.
Discussion on.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion about it. But it ended up, we stayed with.
But I will give you the answer to that question.
And who makes that decision, I'm sorry, who makes the decision on what health care? Is it us, is it?
We, the, the self-insurance committee makes a recommendation to the Town Council.
And the Town Council decides, okay.
And there's also language in, in all of the contracts to have equivalent coverage.
Okay.
So we found it difficult to move the business.
Okay, that's good.
And it, yeah. And it, it, the premiums, it's hard to figure out what the actual savings would have been, because the premiums are tied to the actual claims. So at the time that the proposals are being presented, we're looking at the claims at a certain time.
Right.
But until they lock in, maybe in March timeframe, you can't compare apples to apples. But there's a lot of information about the stop loss that would be offered by one company versus another. And the pharmacy benefits, those, those type of things are what were discussed as far as the RFPs. And then the decision was made based on many factors considered by the self-insurance.
My question wasn't so much about the decision, what was made or why it was made, just more so, obviously the more, you know, which going out, competitive bidding is off the grid.
And usually we end up with a three-year contract.
Yeah.
So once we, so we went out three years ago, locked in, and now we just have locked in for another three years.
Thank you.
If I could just, again, bring, bring attention to, so we're talking, this 2.125 number is roughly 25% of proposed, and this is just for the regular education component of the roughly $8 million increase. So again, like this is, this is a benefit thing, like this is, again, no new services, this is just a means to having a healthy self-insurance fund, correct, right?
And the primary drive of the increase is off, is based off of claims from this past previous year, right?
Right.
So do we, and this is probably speculative, but.